Good afternoon. Can we get ready to come to order, please? We've got about a minute to go and we will officially call our meeting to order. We do have folks from home on Facebook and YouTube that are watching tonight or will be watching at some time, so we'll start at the appropriate hour at 6 o'clock. Thank Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and we welcome you to the April meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. As we've been having lately, we have a good delegation here tonight for our meeting, lots of important business that we're going to be conducting, talking about tonight as we move forward with, on into 2022 and the issues that face our board and face our country today that affect us also here locally in Randolph County government. So, welcome to be a part of it. We officially called to order the April meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners and again, welcome you to our process tonight. We do have, I think I saw Representative Alan McNeil come in tonight. He's kind of a short-termer now, but been a great asset for this county and our board in conducting business and issues that the state gets involved in that affects us locally and appreciate his service. Mayor Dorsett's here again tonight from the city of Archdale. All of you are important. We're not going to continue to call names, but thank you for being here as we conduct this business tonight. Bill Hatfield is here for our invocation from Randolph County Sheriff's Department and we will have our pledge of allegiance. Will you please stand?
Lord, again, we thank you so much for the freedom that we have to gather in safety, to make decisions that benefit the citizens of Randolph County. And for tonight, Lord, I just pray for wisdom for each council member here as decisions may be made, as we listen to each other and discuss different things, as citizens get up to speak and share their heart. Again, that we would listen, we'd think through what's being said and treat each other with the proper respect. And, Lord, tonight, I also want to pray for Lieutenant Reed Lithicum as we pay him special recognition tonight for his 40 years of service to the Randolph County Sheriff's Office and to the citizens of Randolph County. I ask you, Lord, that you would continue to bless him, his family, his ministry, and his business. Thank you for Reed's walk with you, Lord, as you have protected him and he has set a godly example for so many for so long. Lord, thank you for this recognition for him tonight. Lord, we praise you. We thank you for your name. We thank you for your sacrifice on that cross and we're quick to give you all the praise and all the glory in Jesus' precious name. Amen?
Thank you, Bill.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. As I said, we do have quite a bit of business tonight to conduct and we're aware that there's some big ballgames coming on a little bit later tonight and hopefully all of us will be home in time to stay up as long as you want to, to watch that ballgame tonight, but we'll try to keep that in mind as we go forward. We have special recognition tonight and Reverend Hatfield mentioned that in his prayer a while ago, and I'm going to call on Sheriff Greg Sebold who will recognize Mr. Reed Lithicum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, other commissioners. It's an honor for me to stand up here and recognize someone who's been so much for the citizens of Randolph County. I do have a couple pages to read of his accomplishments if you would allow me to do so. 1982 Reed Lithicum met the late Colonel Freddie Rutledge. Reed said that that chance meeting changed his course of life. He was impressed by the sergeant's character, professionalism, and demeanor. After a few patrol ride-alongs, Freddie convinced him to compete, complete his GED and to enroll in basic law enforcement training and to become a reserve deputy. After becoming a sworn officer, he discovered a lifelong passion for patrol duty and for serving the citizens of Randolph County, county where he has never officially worked a single day. He found that his experiences when working for the sheriff's office helped him train, guide, and propel his career with the Crissman Company in which he works full-time. Lieutenant Lithicum stated he learned early on that professionalism, ethics, integrity, and the commitment required to be a good officer are also desirable traits for those who wish to succeed and advance in the corporate world. Reed said today, "I continue to serve at a time when all the headlines seem to be negative toward law enforcement officers because I feel called by the Lord to do so and because someone must continue to represent law and order and stand up for it. I have the utmost respect and admiration for my fellow officers and for the job they perform every day. I believe the majority of our citizens still respect and support law enforcement despite the negative headlines. I also still believe serving is a noble cause and that is truly all that matters. I hope my meager service in some small way helps the citizens we serve and my brothers, my fellow officers." After four decades, it's still very satisfying for a citizen to say, "Thank you for your service" and at the end of the shift to hear someone say on the radio, "Thanks for your help tonight, 268." This is why I serve. I thank my amazing wife of 41 years for her tolerance, understanding, and support. I thank the Lord for providing me with the opportunity to proudly wear the badge of the Randolph County Sheriff's Office. I am truly blessed. Some of his notable accomplishments, he was reserve deputy Randolph County Sheriff's Office from March 31, 1982 until now as a rank of lieutenant. Patrol division hours served to date approximately 7,000. Sheriff served under, fore-elected, two-appointed. Hobbies, aviation. He co-owns a small plane that he enjoys flying. He has landed it at approximately 150 different airports in 15 states from the Canadian border to Florida and all over the Midwest. He recently piloted an L-39 military attack jet owned by a colleague at Crissman in Michigan. He has also flown the New Spirit of St. Louis, the single-engine Columbia 300. Eric Lindberg flew solo across the Atlantic to France to commemorate the 75th anniversary of his grandfather's famous crossing in 1929. The New Spirit of St. Louis is now an exhibit in Smithsonian Air and Space Museum in Washington. He's been the vice president of operations at the Crissman Company since November of 1979. Most memorable incident on patrol, he's stated, "Wow, that's more difficult to answer. I've really never done anything special. Just responded to a few thousand calls like other deputies answer each day. The ones that are forever in my memory are those that involve death. The DOAs from natural causes and unnatural causes. The young lady who was a victim of a hit-and-run that I attempted unsuccessfully to keep alive on the side of the highway by administering CPR. I'll refrain from speaking further of those, so I'll go with this. About seven years ago, I responded to a domestic dispute just after midnight. The female involved met me at the intersection up the road from the address where the incident occurred. She alleged that a male at the residence had assaulted her and had also damaged her vehicle. I proceeded to the residence and discovered a male subject laying in the driveway complaining of injuries and stating he needed an ambulance. I requested EMS to respond and walked away towards the residence to obtain a witness statement. When I turned away, the male, he immediately stood up and approached me with a five-foot walking stick and he began taking swings at me with it. I avoided getting struck and ended up spraying him with a heavy dose of OC spray and as a result, the wind spraying myself equally as well. I was eventually able to get the male subject wrestled to the ground and even though I was completely blind from the OC, I got the handcuffs on him. EMS arrived and after flushing my eyes with several bottles of saline solution for a half hour in the ambulance, I was able to transport the male to the magistrate and ultimately to the jail." Mr. Chairman, as I said earlier, it was an honor. I've been working some at night and I observed Reed as he's working with the younger guys on the shifts, what kind of mentor he is to these guys. He's a great person to have out, working with these young guys with his, I guess, experience of 40 years. You can't go wrong with him being out there. I even act as if I'm a sponge when I'm around him because he is very knowledgeable. And it is my honor to ask Reed to come over and say a few words if you'd like. And as you see, the place is packed tonight.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, commissioners. I don't know what to say about this. I've been blessed and privileged to do this for 40 years and I really appreciate the recognition. But the ones that deserve it are the ones that do it every day. They deserve the recognition and the support from you and the folks in this room and the citizens of Randolph County. I just do a small part because I love it. It's a privilege to me. It's, I get excited every time I put this uniform on. And I've been blessed throughout my career with support of my wife. She's not here tonight. She couldn't be here tonight, but she has never really been a fan of me being in law enforcement, but she's supported me for 40 years doing it because she knows that it's a passion of mine and I really enjoy it. And I thank all my brothers in law enforcement here tonight and I mean it when I say that they are the heroes and I look up to every one of them. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Reed. I want all of you, the operative board in this, for 40 years, he's been a volunteer. He's done this voluntarily for 40 years and a great mentor. And also, I know in the opening line, Sheriff, you referred to Colonel Fred Rutledge. Cindy Reed's widow is back here in the audience tonight and I'd like to recognize her also. She's with us tonight and we miss Freddie. He's a great officer and a great asset to this county for a number of years. So, I just wanted to mention those couple of things. Reed, thank you so much for your service to this county. Appreciate it. God bless you and your retirement.
And before I read this, one other thing about Freddie Rutledge. There's no telling how many people he has affected the same way that he affected Lieutenant Lithicum here. You know, he was an icon for Randolph County and the law, Sheriff's Office here in Randolph County. So, this is, Randolph County Sheriff's Office presents Lieutenant Reed Lithicum in recognition of 40 years of service as an active reserve deputy in the patrol division for the Randolph County Sheriff's Office and citizens of Randolph County. It's got the dates, March 31, 1982, March 31, 2022. Your selfless dedication and ongoing devotion to protect and serve is sincerely appreciated. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. All right, it's time for our public comment period now. I'll ask our attorney, Mr. Morgan, to please read the rules for our public comment period.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The rules and procedure for the public comment period are as follows. The public comment period will be limited to 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting. If more time is required, it will be at the discretion of the board. Each speaker must give his or her name both orally and in writing before speaking. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Comments are to be directed to the board as a whole and not to one individual commissioner. Response, discussion, or action concerning issues raised during the public input session will be at the discretion of the board. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentations. Speakers should not discuss matters which concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office or matters in current or anticipated litigation.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Charles Edgerton. I dedicate my remarks tonight to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. on this, the 54th anniversary of his tragic assassination in Memphis. That historic tragedy is cut deeper by this commission's tragic and immoral decision to keep the Confederate statue where it is despite fully knowing the true anti-Confederate history of this county. In 1967, Martin Luther King wrote, quote, "Ever since the birth of our nation, white America has had a schizophrenic personality on the question of race. She has been torn between selves, a self in which she proudly profess the great principles of democracy and a self in which she sadly practice the antithesis of democracy. This tragic duality has produced a strange indecisiveness and ambivalence, causing America to take a step backwards simultaneously with every step forward on the question of racial justice. There has never been a solid, unified, and determined thrust to make justice a reality for Afro-Americans. What is the source of this perennial indecision and vacillation?" He says, "It lies in the congenital deformity of racism that has crippled the nation from its inception." I have to ask, what is it you're afraid of? We in the NAACP stand with Martin Luther King in nonviolence. Where did that unsubstantiated threat of violence come from that rushed your vote? Do you know that my wife, who sits right here with me and I, recently received a death threat for our work for racial justice? The Ashboro Police know. The FBI and the FBI know. Neo-Nazis sent a death threat, including a photograph of me with crosshairs on it.
Dr. Edgerton, one minute.
Thank you. They threatened a horrible death for both of us and our stand for racial justice, but yet we stand before you tonight and follow the courageous example of Martin Luther King undeterred. Are you willing to stand for us, with us, for justice? He wrote, "If a man has not discovered something that he will die for, he is not fit to live. Your decision was, in my view, another shot in the legacy of Martin Luther King. It was a vote for white supremacy, slavery, racism, and child trafficking. I see it as anti-blackness at its heart. This commission and its commissioners carry the weight of that immoral decision. I pray you will atone by correcting your damaging error. God is all forgiving."
Thank you. On February the 23rd, 2020.
Ma'am, could you lower the microphone?
You want me to lower it this way? Is that better?
That's better.
On February the 23rd, 2020, a young man was jogging in Brunswick, Georgia. His name was Ahmed Aubrey. He was 25 years old. He was African-American. Three men killed him simply because of the color of his skin, because he was black. Those men are serving life sentences for that hate crime. And that is the same hate that that statue in front of this courthouse represents. It represents the hate, the bigotry, and an ugly spot on this community. But you have decided that it will stay where it is as it is. And unfortunately for this community, another hate crime has been committed by you.
We will limit to 15 minutes tonight, so your clapping can just delay the process.
Good evening. People expected last month's vote to be the most disappointing for me. In fact, it was the most eye-opening. What I saw was sad, but not unexpected. For too long, this county has kowtowed to the whims of racists in order to keep the peace. It is high time that we came to the realization that peace without justice is an illusion. What are the undeniable facts that I used to come to this conclusion? Number one, I have been told that members of this very board solicited pro-Confederates to attend last month's meeting. We know that solicitation brought in pro-Confederates from as far away as Virginia after board members begged with us to keep this a local issue. Number two, not only did those people come from out of state, we've been told that they are active members of organizations that still want to separate from the United States. Even now, some are facing charges for bringing guns to protest. That's who you invited, not us. You allowed these people to stand here and make statement after statement that you knew to be untrue, yet you sat silent. In the end, you chose to side with these individuals and you didn't even have the decency to be honest about why you did it. One of you told Fox 8 that you could do nothing because you were bound by the statute from the state when you admitted last month that there were ways around that statute. You claimed that there had to be a call of a surprise vote last month because of intelligence that you got from Ashboro Police Department that said there was a threat against the building. However, Ashboro Police Department has no record of such a threat. While dealing with these inconsistencies, let's focus on what we know is true. Number one, Confederates left America to preserve and expand slavery. Number two, the United Daughters of the Confederacy is documented for using monuments like this one to justify slavery and support implementation of Jim Crow laws. These are not opinions. They are facts documented in the writings of the Confederate founders and the UDC themselves. The sad truth about last month is that when we needed our elected officials to stand up and tell an inconvenient truth to the rest of the county, there was not one member with the fortitude to do so.
Mr. Faust, 30 seconds.
The NAACP said from day one, eight months ago, not a year, that if you had evidence or reasons to keep that monument, give us the reason that makes sense. You didn't give a reason last month because there is no rational reason, just a feeble attempt to keep one side happy at the sake of justice for the other side. Thank you.
Mr. Faust, I believe you're the one, several of you said, "Vote." You didn't care whether it was up or down. You asked us to vote, so we voted.
No, that's not true.
Yes, it absolutely is true.
That is absolutely not true. You told me that you were going to give a 30-day notice and that is the regular procedure and you were always against that regular procedure.
I told you.
At a time when our people were not even here. Our people are open to Ashboro Middle School for the education conference. You told us that if they put it on the, if they run it up and had to go in the agenda.
This is out of order. Mr. Chairman, this is out of order.
You're out of order.
This is out of order.
I told you months ago that you would not like to vote and you insisted that we vote, so we voted. Who's next?
I'm answering the question.
That's it. Good evening. Dwayne Roberts, lifelong citizen of Randolph County. In May, it'll be 66 years born here and raised here. Thank you, 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 thank you. Thank all of you. And I know you should have received a thank you letter from the North Carolina Division of Sons of Confederate Veterans for taking a stand. What a great month. This is April, Confederate History Month. What a great day to have that memorial sitting out front right where it belongs. Last month, I gave you a reason to keep that memorial right where it was. God was watching. Thank you. And I just stole this off the top of my head. I remember it. I don't know the exact date or whatever, but this is a quote from Martin Luther King Jr. "We have more to worry about than a flag." Thank you. Y'all have a good evening. Have one more speaker.
Good afternoon. It is good to be before y'all today. And it's good to be before you because there are some things yet that need to be called out. First of all, you have lied to us. You have backbitten us. You come and told us one thing. You've done something different. Y'all proved that Randolph County is one of the most racist counties in the United States of America. And it's a shame that you all would sit behind this desk and every time that we clap, y'all told us we were very disrespectful. But then, when you had all your Klan friends, all the white supremacy and all those guys, they talked during the whole meeting. The chairman never said anything, but you spoke up twice, but it did not stop. And y'all said nothing about it. But you know something? It won't be longer to be voting time again. And I promise you that we're going to get somebody to run that has a decency and love for Randolph County as a whole, not just white people. Thank
All right. The next item on our agenda is our consent agenda tonight.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. Our rules, we limit the speaking to 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting. We've had 15 minutes worth of speakers.
Okay, our consent agenda tonight. We have three items. Anybody want to pull one of those out for discussion or I'll have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Have a second. Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved. Under new business, we have our opioid settlement update and Mike Fox, Don Saunders is here and Paul. Mike has sort of been heading this up, representing the county. All these gentlemen are involved in the process. We are starting to see some dollar amounts now. So, welcome. And I do want to mention also, Mr. Fox is chairman of the North Carolina Department of Transportation Board and to be, I guess, the president of Peamont Triad Partnership, are you already there? I think that's.
Yes, I've already assumed that role, Mr. Chairman.
And I also want to say, he's a member of the North Carolina Railroad Board of Trustees. And I also want to say, he's a member of the North Carolina Railroad Board of Trustees. He was our big ally in the mega site. So he's here tonight, wearing many hats, but he's been an asset to our county, and we thank him for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Board, and Mr. Manager. Again, my name's Mike Fox. I'm here tonight as your attorney, one of many attorneys to help with the opioids litigation that, if you recall, we were talking earlier with, there they are, Paul Coats and Don Vaughn are our local co-counsel.
Excuse me. I have a longtime college buddy who was Don Saunders. I think that's what I said a while ago, Don Vaughn. And Don was also in the North Carolina General Assembly, and has a long history in our area also, so, sorry, Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, there are a number of national law firms that are involved in prosecuting this case against the distributors of these opioid products that have wreaked such havoc in all of our communities over, you know, many, many years. And we've worked with your attorneys, Mr. Morgan, where's Amy? She was here earlier. Yeah, Amy has done a great job. And essentially, the last time we were here in this room, I know we had a meeting with you in one of your work sessions, we were asking you to sign on and proceed as a litigating party in the lawsuits against these distributors. The good news is, we're here tonight to give you an update, and there have been a number of settlements in those cases that have been negotiated on a national basis. And you will start seeing some money coming soon that you'll be able to put toward opioid treatment and relief from this scourge. As you know, because I know you've taken a vote on this, you've approved a memorandum of understanding with all the other counties in North Carolina and the Attorney General's Office about how the money that North Carolina is to be not only distributed amongst the different counties and cities, but also what you can spend that on. And, you know, obviously, to put it at a very high level, the goal is, is that we're going to get this money as a result of the bad conduct of these distributors who put this product out there without the appropriate warnings and without telling the truth to people, including doctors and pharmacists, about how addictive it was. And so I think it was very wise of the counties and the cities and the Attorney General's Office to agree that the money would go to fix the problem. And you do have some flexibility in how you do that, but essentially, all of the money has to go to work on fixing the problem. I'd like to invite Paul Coats up, and Paul's got a little more detail as well as a handout that we can talk a little bit about the schedule of what you can look to receive. And then Don can come up as well if you have any questions, but we thought it'd be a good night to come deliver some good news, and that comes. Paul, would you come on up?
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you, Mike. Again, my name is Paul Coats, and I was going to try and break the ice just by going, "How about them heels?" That's really what. But we do have more important things to talk about, of course. I have handed out this page for us, for you to each take and look at. It shows the payouts to Randolph County over the next 18 years. Just to bring you back to the whole picture, there's a $750 million settlement that's coming to North Carolina. Randolph County's share of that is just under $10 million. It'll be paid over the 18 years, and that is only the settlement with the three distributors and Johnson &amp; Johnson. And there are still cases out there that are being litigated, and one of those is Durham County. Durham County was picked as what is called a bellwether case. A bellwether is the lead sheep, I think, in Ireland. I don't know, something like that. But they call it a bellwether because it's the lead case, one of the lead cases across the country, one of 10, that are going to be tried against the pharmacy defendants acting as distributors. And again, distributors by law have a lot of regulations they have to follow that the plaintiffs claim that were not followed that led to too many pills in counties like yours. So I think it was four years ago we were here talking with you, and I know the sheriff spoke, I think, a little bit, and maybe the county manager might have, but about the problems you're having in Randolph County, and I don't think the pandemic has helped those problems. We're hearing statistics that actually it's been hurting us a lot more, and we're having a lot more problems. But you'll have funds now, and hopefully, we'll have more funds coming as litigation. I want to thank Randolph County for being a litigating county because without lawsuits, bringing the mass to this mass tort, we would not have gotten this kind of settlement. So your participation, your willingness to come into the case early on made a huge difference, along with 80-plus other government entities in North Carolina. North Carolina had one of the highest litigating percentages across the country, and North Carolina should be proud of bringing attention to the problem to help solve it as well. So this shows that this year, you're going to get roughly 1.2 million to, for solving and education and helping the Sheriff's Department and whatever y'all do decide to do with it. You have the power here to make those decisions. There are limitations in the memorandum of agreement and in the national settlement, but all of those limitations, we think, are positive reactions to help solving the problem. So that's a good thing. And then, over the next 18 years, you'll see the payouts. I just wanted to point out that Johnson &amp; Johnson defendant, their payouts stop in 2031, and that's why the amounts go down, starting in 2032. I know that's hard for us to think about here in 2022, but I'm hoping my grandchildren will have the benefit of this if I'm not around. So the status is also across the country that there's been a high percentage of counties and cities responding positively to the settlement because we had, in the nation, we had to bring in numbers to meet goals, to get the most money. And I think we're close to maximizing that across the country, and certainly, hopefully, for North Carolina and Randolph County as well. So entertain any questions at this point, but that's the update for today.
Have all the cases been, so I know one of the families, their case, the court, the lower court threw it out, or an higher court did. Have all those been resolved?
The Purdue family is still being dealt with. That case is dealt with through the bankruptcy court, the federal bankruptcy courts. They had a settlement. A lot of people objected to that, and then the Purdue family came back to the table, and as I understand it, they've put another $1.5 billion into their portion of the settlement to get it up to almost $6 billion in the Purdue bankruptcy. Randolph County should also participate in that settlement at some point. The bankruptcy court's a little more complicated than the middle district where one judge is handling all of these things. Yeah, we've got the, there's actually, well, we've got the case, the Durham case is also a national case that you're part of, too. We've included that in the complaint that we filed for Randolph County against the pharmacy defendants acting as distributors. Don't worry, we're not suing your local Walgreens over here on Clark Street or wherever it may be. It's suing nationally Walmart, Walgreens, when they act as distributors. So that's a different look at it. But Randolph will participate, and hopefully, that will have a settlement that may be as big, maybe bigger than this one. We just don't know yet. It's too early to tell.
It would be in addition to this?
Correct. And I will tell you, I'm on the Durham County case, too. I'm monitoring that as well, and they're actively engaged in discovery. And a trial might happen, hopefully, sometime in mid-2023 on that case. So, but they're heavy into that right now.
You might speak to the board about use of the funds, restrictions, or what's permitted, what we can and can't do, have the public also.
Well, I heard you wanted to make the game. Seriously, though, the way to do that is to pull out the MOA, and I would refer you to Exhibits A and B of the MOA, and that's the memorandum of agreement. There are restrictions, and just briefly, some of those are along the lines of treatment, along the lines of overdose response teams, naloxone distribution. Naloxone is the life-saving drug that has saved so many lives. Criminal justice diversion programs, trying to work with the local criminal justice system and try and get people away from drugs into treatment, even in prison perhaps, allowing, you know, looking at treatment in prison. Housing support, employment-related services, recovery support services, evidence-based addiction treatment. And the MOA, and it's a long document, and we can talk more informally with Ben Morgan or Amy, too, about some of that as we get into the weeds. We're glad to help you with that as you're trying to say, "What do you want to do?" We would encourage, the MOA, and we would encourage regions to collaborate some, too, to join forces, maybe, you know, to put together a center here in Ashboro that might service even more county a little bit as well, or some of the other contingent counties. So there are ideas about that. Your representative, your attorney, county attorneys and representatives worked hard on this MOA. It's a really fabulous document on what it does, and so there's a lot there.
Mr. Chairman, we have, on the May agenda, we'll have some action items for the Board of Commissioners to take, to begin receiving some of these funds. But equally as important, we've had for several years now an ongoing opioid collaborative in Randolph County that this board funded through strategic planning. And I'm so proud of the work that they're doing because we truly are ahead of the game in so many different ways. And one of the things we'll talk about in May is the process, the strategic planning process that we're going to continue to utilize to make recommendations to the board with that memorandum of understanding, but also where we think it would have the biggest impacts here in Randolph County. So I'm real proud to be able to say that we're set, we are prepared to move forward on this, and we've had in place for several years, thanks to this board, before the pandemic, with our opioid collaborative, and we'll be talking about that more at the May meeting.
So if I could just add two things. One, we signed on early, this board, not me, I wasn't here, but my husband Stan was pharmacist. He was on the state pharmacy board, and so they had been working on it for years. So that's why this board signed on so early. And I have to put in there a plug for independent pharmacists and the role they play in our healthcare system. So there's that. But then the other thing I wanted to say is, it's my understanding from being at the NCAA C-C Conference in Greensboro last week, that nonprofits or faith-based groups that are, have effective treatment programs running, up and running, you know, could work out an MOU with the county as well. So these funds do not have to go to a government program of some kind, and I really like that because I think that collaboration is huge. And so I think we, currently, to my knowledge, we don't have a faith-based treatment group right here in Randolph County, but, you know, that may be on the horizon, we'll see. But I like the fact that there's flexibility for the use of those funds, and we can look at what people are doing and what's working and support them with that, as opposed to trying to reinvent the wheel.
And my understanding is, too, what's working now, you can add funds to, so this doesn't prevent you, this, it doesn't have to be a new program. So you've done well here. You can supplement what you've got going and add to it. Would be great.
We have a juvenile crime prevention council here that I think we can sort of put some help there.
Education is a big part of this, no doubt, and that's great.
Quick question on the, you've told us when we're going to get the money. Are there restrictions on the timeframe it needs to be spent? And I'm kind of doing it in reference to some of the federal funding, ARPA funding. Is there any restrictions on how long before it's used?
The only restriction I reviewed briefly today, I thought, was if you earn interest on the account, that whatever interest you earn has to also be used for funding of programs. But my reading of that means, yeah, you can invest the money and use it eventually, not within the year you get it necessarily, is my understanding.
Questions? All right.
Again, we thank you for being, taking the courage.
Don, you got anything to say?
I'm usually long-winded. I'm going to say it's been a long road since 2018. I represent Stedman Corporation here for over a decade. I was there, lawyering for David Stedman, Stedman Manufacturing, and very pleased to be a part of this community for many years. Been a long road since 2018. We are pleased to send this report to you for nearly $10 million. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Good team. Thank you very much. Okay. Soil and Water Conservation District report. Craig Fraser, I see Caitlin, yeah, Caitlin's here with you tonight.
Thank y'all for having us tonight. I am Craig Fraser, the chair of the Randolph Soil and Water District Board. I'm going to let Caitlin give her presentation, and then I'll come up and ask, answer any questions or further cover.
Good afternoon, commissioners. A couple of y'all have already had the honor of hearing a little bit of this talk, but luckily tonight, I've got some different information for you that we're excited to share. A little bit of background on the STRAP program, which is Stream Flow Rehabilitation Assistance Program that the state is coming down with now for us. Recent hurricanes in the mountains have caused tremendous flooding, and hurricanes typically cause tremendous flooding across our state, but most notably, a couple of months ago in Haywood County, there was substantial flooding, substantial loss of life due to that flooding. One, our engineer on staff here at Randolph Soil and Water actually went up and assisted with some of the EWP evaluations for funding on that, so got our feet kind of wet. We also both took the training for the funding on the emergency watershed production, which is EWP funding. So we were both kind of familiar with that, and then recent legislation brought down this STRAP program. So we were very excited. Also, both of us had our feet wet with doing some of these evaluations on stream debris removal. So that's bringing us to tonight with my presentation to you guys on our proposal and our application to the state on stream debris removal funding. Just go ahead. So this first slide, these are all the watersheds actually in this county. I don't know if everyone was aware, there are nine watersheds in this county. All these blue lines are creeks and streams that are recognized as pretty much carrying water any time of year. There's a lot of those in this county. We service two river basins as well, the Cape Fair and the Yadkin PD. That red line is actually a 303D-listed stream in this county, which means there are significant pollution issues with it, so that's why it's noted in red. I just wanted to bring this to y'all's attention to show you the amount of blue lines that we have, and that also equals the amount of potential flooding that we have. So pictures, to me, speak a thousand words. These are two different backups within our urban areas of our county. Upper Back Creek is actually feeding Lake Lucas in the city of Ashboro, and that's just one backup there. one backup there. And then the UT to Muddy Creek, that is in the city of Archdale. So we walked maybe 200 feet off of a street, and that is, you can see the housing development up in the corner there as well. These are pretty substantial backups that have just kind of occurred. And anytime water cannot pass through that, it's going to back up and flood these houses. It's kind of hard to see with the smaller pictures, but you can see in the yards of the houses where the water has been backing up. Here is one creek in the upper portion of the county on Polcat Creek. It has a significant drainage area, and these are, one picture is the Beaver Dam, and then other pictures are just the backups in general. The water has to go somewhere. In this area specifically, I'll show you in a map in a few minutes of the flood zone that is what's called the 100-year flood zone. But in this case, it's actually probably bigger because the water is not leaving. That property alone had four different beaver dams on about a 10,000-foot stretch of the So I just wanted to give you a little map. The Upper Back Creek I spoke of earlier feeding Lake Lucas, you can see, it's not a significant portion of creek, but the flood zone in that area would clear up a lot of issues because all those fields in green, anytime it rains more than about an inch, they all flood. And they're active crop fields. So anytime the crops flood, you're creating damage and potentially loss of the crop. Polcat Creek, that's where I was speaking of earlier, that whole property will typically become a flood zone. If you'll go to the next slide. So there's your flood zone. For the potential Polcat Creek removal, anytime it rains, all of that will flood in those blue shaded lines. And at the very bottom of that line is actually a bridge. So anytime we can impact a public right-of-way like that, it's also helpful for everyone, not just the landowners. Go to the next slide. So that's kind of our big-picture areas where you're looking at the public benefit. But I also wanted to touch on a little bit more of the smaller picture that you might think with the Laniers Creek removal potential. So this is actually feeding the Uare River in the southern part of the county. Most of this is wooded. You would think, oh, well, this probably isn't causing that big of an issue. It's surrounded by cropland. The bridge is at the top end of that, and it should just flare right down into the Uare. This is a blockage that's on that creek. It was as tall as I am, for reference, and it backs up, it's hard to see in the picture, but at least three to four feet there. It was very impressive, huge trees, and it's not something that's just going to go away or get blown out. If you go to the next one, there's another picture of it. You can see the actual trees that are in that one. And this is what it's doing. This is a pasture, and there's actually a road up above that. And this was, we hadn't had any rain in probably about two weeks when these pictures were taken. So that pasture is pretty much useless for anything. It's wet, it stays wet, and that's where the creek is basically rerouting itself due to that blockage. So, and this is a municipality project. That's the beautiful part about this program is we were able to kind of canvas the whole county and get urban projects and rural projects. So Pinewood Branch feeds our 303D listed stream, which is Haskett's Creek, right in the middle of the city of Ashboro. This was probably our longest segment that we measured to put on this project. It was a little over four to five miles long. And the issues with it weren't necessarily big blockages like I showed you on the pasture land, but it was more small, minor blockages related to undergrowth and things like that. If you go to the next slide, this is some of the stuff that was on Pinewood Branch. The one, I don't know where it's at to you guys, but you can kind of see the solar farm up in the background. That's just right off of Old Liberty Road. You can see it kind of when you're driving down and look across the bridge. And that road will flood. I come that way to work every morning. It will flood pretty much anytime it rains. So anytime we can decrease any potential impacts, especially to roadways, I think it's a great thing. And there's just some other pictures of the small debris. And then this is the flood zone, and this is specifically Old Liberty Road where it will flood. And also, the city of Ashboro sewer easement, sewer easements also typically follow a creek just because it's a flat land. So anytime a sewer easement floods, they typically have a release of sewer stuff into the water, for lack of a better term. And that has fines associated with it, and it's also, it's very unsanitary. So anytime we can decrease the impacts on the sewer easements as well, we think that's a great opportunity. So this is just a small portion of the municipalities. With this program, we did reach out to all the municipalities, trying to get any problem areas they had as well, so we could kind of get them included in our count for what we turned into the state. So this is our ranking form that we're going to be using. Our Soil and Water Local Board just approved this for us. Our key considerations were the length of the stream segments, ease of access, beaver dams. This program will also allow us to directly target the control of beavers as well, so we're not just eradicating the dams, we're also going to kind of help deal with the problem associated with the beavers as well.
Can you do away with the beaver dam?
We will try to get rid, we will, we have to remove anything.
Can you remove, I mean, replace or take them to another location?
We'll leave that up to the trappers. I'm not really sure what's actually legal with that aspect. I think if you live trap a beaver, you can't relocate it, but I'm not 100% on that. But we would have to hire trappers because none of us are qualified to deal with that. But luckily, this program will allocate money to hire folks that are qualified to do that. We also look at the watershed size, because the greater the size of the watershed, the more water going there, the higher potential for flooding. And then the estimated percentage of blockage, because as you saw, the Laniers Creek project, that was pretty much 100% blockage. And so this was our request. It was $3,076,290 for a little over 19 miles of creeks in this county. Not sure how much of that we'll get, but we're hoping for a lot. They've specifically allocated 26 million for the whole state to be divvied up. So hopefully, we'll get a little chunk of it. And on this next slide, I showed you in the beginning, our blue lines. The additional red lines on this slide are the maps of the creeks that we requested funding for. So they're pretty spread out. We tried to get projects as best we could. And the Randolph Soil and Water staff, which is myself and Randy Freeman, we, we pretty much walked all of these creeks to assess them and determine the level of damage that was there and the potential benefit that could be there as well. So with this, I think myself and the Randolph County Soil and Water District staff and board would like to request the support of the Commissioners.
To clarify that support, there's actually $38 million in that program. We lobbied really hard to get that program, and it was beeping before the Haywood County incidence of flooding. Northern Idole and adjacent counties had a severe flooding a couple of years ago. They lost several lives there, and I forget how many million-dollar worth of bridges that were lost because of debris that was, was in the stream prior to a storm, banked up against the infrastructure and took it out. If it hadn't have been there, the water could have went on down the stream and the ridge would still be there. And I mean, I could document many of those cases in that area, and the deaths also were contributed to those exact same floodings. So we had a lot of support from Representative Jeff McNeely from Idole County, because that had directly affected his district. And he was a freshman at Raleigh, but we had a lot of help from our representative, Pat Hurley. With her seniority in Raleigh, she really paid off in getting him into locations to get this funding approved. And Caitlin spoke, there was 26 million in the stream debris removal. There was 2 million, I think they moved back to that out of the 38 million, so I think it's 28 million now, to be allocated across the state. We hope to get a larger share. I serve on the Legislative Committee for our State Association, I'm actually the Chair. So we were in the forefront of getting this money. So we were, you know, ahead of the game, as you said about the opioid thing. We were ahead of the game. So that's why we knew so much about the program early on. And we sent staff out to look for these projects. We can do any stream, if we have funding, in the county. What we looked for early on was programs, specific sites that allowed access to remove that debris. Because you have to have landowner approval to get in there to get that out, and you have to have somewhere to go with it. So we picked sites where we had that access without taking, being aware of this, months and months of getting approval, signed agreements with landowners to get access to it. So that's why we selected those sites early on, and this program is only a two-year program. It's a non-recurring budget. So we have to make sure that we can effectively show the legislature that we can do this project, so we can acquire funding in the future.
So is this a fixed amount for us? I mean, that's...
No, the Soil and Waters Commission in Raleigh would allow, allocate the funds to each applicant to the districts. What we're asking is, in this program, it allows for 15% administrative cost.
From this money?
Yes, from this money, for administrative cost. We're asking the Commissioners to allow us to retain that 15% as match funds, instead of using it for administrative cost. Because early indications are, we don't know for sure, but we think we'll rank much higher if we have match funds to go with the funds. We think we'll rank higher in getting money from the state.
So that would count as a match?
That would count as a match, yes.
I know we talked about that.
Right.
We had the original meeting up at Ramon a few weeks ago.
So we're really not asking for money from the county, we're asking you let us use the money that's coming back to the county as match funds.
When will you hear something?
Early May.
Really, really soon. The applications had to begin by the end of March. And we submitted that we had sent in a request for match funds. So we didn't lie to them, we didn't tell them the whole truth because we didn't have your approval. But we did send in that we had requested match funds, so...
Well, I know you mentioned, if we had some matching funds, that would, that would tend to...
Potentially. And what we're basing that off of is, they have a ranking program, the ranking form that they're using on how to allocate the funds, that's the question on our form. Why would you ask if you're not going to utilize it? So, the match funds.
So our idea is for us to submit your application, right?
Do what?
For you to approve your, the submission of your grant application.
Yes, because that grant money will also come to the county. So if the county agreeing to handle those funds, we talked to Will about that, because this is a grant program, so we'll have to do the work, then submit for the grant funds, and it'll come back. It's a reimbursement grant program.
This, this doesn't mention the match. Does that need to be in the motion?
I would think so, yes.
All right.
Craig, is any other additional cost over and above, you know, that you're going to need additional support or anything like that? I, I think in the...
Yeah, we, we will need some equipment for the local district, and we can request that in our regular budget process. We won't need it until after July the 1st, so after we submit the budget.
Do you have a clue what you...
Caitlin had put together a list of items they thought we would need.
Yeah, we've submitted through our, the local process. It's around $42,000 for a truck, drone and equipment, GPS equipment, some other small things like that.
Shovels and axes and that kind of...
Luckily, we've already got some of that stuff.
You know how to use that?
I've seen it.
So the $3,076,000 is your estimate?
That we, that's what we've requested.
Of mitigating these problems, these specific problems?
Yes, that's what we've have requested.
So the state could argue with that or take exception to that?
No, what they think they will do from, from the commission members on the state commission, they feel like they will receive all the applications because they don't have the idea how many they're going to get. If they have $100 million worth of applications, they got 38 million that's being total on the project, they're going to say, well, we're going to give 38% of everybody's request. So we'll get 38% of basically what we requested. So we feel like we're going the higher side of requests because we've, early on, we had a, a good insight into the program. And we also have to look at the work you can actually accomplish in a two-year period. We felt 3 million was, was pretty much pushing what we could get on the ground.
So you're thinking the commission would just average it down and give everybody something, not prioritize projects and pick winners?
I, I can't say that for sure. So, because there's a lot of different things. I mean, there's the, you heard of PL-566 dam structures? We don't have any in Randolph. Idole, some of the western counties have them. Their flood structure, it was put in by the federal government 70, 80 years ago now. They have a 50-year lifespan. They put a set aside some, I think six or eight million in this program, just to help mitigate, to improvement on those projects. And the 2 million they put back into stream removal was actually, they were going to use it for match funds for the EWP, which is Emergency Watershed Protection Program through USDA.
Okay, so let me, so for clarification, if I understood this correctly, whatever amount you get...
We receive.
You would like to keep the 15% that is to be used in administrative costs and use it instead as a, as a match?
Match funds.
For whatever that...
Right.
For whatever the amount is you're given. Okay. So do you need a motion, Chairman?
Yes, if, is any other questions or comments from, from the board? Make sure...
I'll give a stamp. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the grant submission for the Soil and Water Conservation District STRAP program grant, with the understanding that 15% of it will be used as a match, as opposed to administration costs.
Administration costs, yeah. I'll second.
And to clarify that, the reason being, we don't think we need 15% administrative cost to implement the program. I mean, and...
But that works, that works the arithmetic.
I, I think the wording works, yes.
The arithmetic works with that. Is that right?
The what?
The arithmetic, the 15% works with, with what you want to do.
Yes.
And do those funds come directly to you, or do, they come through the county?
Nope.
Yeah. That's what I understood.
Right.
Would the county be involved in these right-of-ways and...
In the early process, it'll be very simple because we're only working on sites we know we can get access to, because basically the landowners or the municipalities own access to those. So there's not, don't have to get access to them.
If there was more later on, it might become...
Yes, well, I mean, we hope this program is a continual program. And in the future, then it will be, because you'll be dealing, say, say you've got landowners that own opposite sides of the stream. The stream's a property line. If you want that stream and work, you've got to have permission from both property owners. And currently, everything we're looking at is either the landowner or the municipality on both sides of the creek. So there's not a...
And the representative that presented, that drafted the bill and presented up there, he kept emphasizing, this is, this is a one-and-done.
Yes.
But if they get, to use your example, if they got $100 million, that's a pretty, pretty good indication that we've still got a problem.
There's a problem all over the state, and everybody's aware of it.
It could be some more funds.
There very well could be, but the question, the issue is, when that bill was submitted, originally, some members of, of the Legislature wanted to send these funds to DOT. They were arguing over who to administer the program. Soil and Water has already participated in these type programs for years. As Hal said, we are a very well-kept secret. We do that on purpose. Soil and Water's been around since 1937. It has been a very well-kept secret, so...
All right. Any other discussion, questions? All right, we have a motion to approve and a set aside of 15% as a match. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. And it's approved.
Thank y'all. We'll report back how much we get.
In this form.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Tracy Murphy, I have a proclamation designated April as National Child Abuse Prevention
Good evening, everyone. I am so happy to be before you this evening to talk about something, as you are aware, is very near and dear to my heart. Child Abuse Prevention Month is usually celebrated in April, and it looks like all of you are wearing blue. Blue is the color that we wear in celebration of Child Abuse Prevention Month to show that as a community, we're all standing together. to show that as a community, we're all standing together. And I am up here, but there are so many others in the community that is responsible for assisting with child abuse prevention, other than Department of Social Services. And I don't know if either of our superintendents are here today. Hello. Our school system are such great partners, Yuri Charter, as well as city and county are fabulous partners, along with our Public Health Partnership for Children, Children's Advocacy, because, um, Children's Advocacy Center, Law Enforcement, and others. They all assist us in making sure that we are sharing information, and we are working together to protect the most vulnerable children in our community. We are seeing record numbers of maltreatment in Randolph County. In our proclamation, I believe the number of reports that we received this year are 16, 106, 100, 1,641 reports in a year. Last year, I think we were around 200 less than that, so we continue to trend up. I know it is no surprise to you that we are having parents who are suffering from substance abuse and addiction. We have, um, substance-affected infants who are, um, suffering the effects of addiction left at the hospital, or parents leaving their young people at Department of Social Services who have severe behavioral health, and the youth themselves are suffering from addiction problems. So we are all trying to work together. Our children are needy, and the more that we can work together as a community to redefine and look at our policies, systems, and communities, we want to work together to propel children into becoming healthy, thriving members of our community, so that they can reach their full potential. If any of you have extra time on a Wednesday, and you sit in to abuse neglecting dependency court, I am telling you, one day of listening to what is going on with our most vulnerable children will leave you traumatized. Our staff manage that population every day, the children, along with trying to assist parents. So we are, this evening, asking for your support. We want positive consideration of a proclamation designating April as, um, Child Abuse Prevention Month in Randolph County.
Thank you, Tracy. Th- these are the things we don't like to talk about, or we, we think they don't happen, but they're happening all around us every day. And, uh, I would like, it happened last Friday morning, um, I came down a little early for the Toyota meeting, and Tracy happened, and her team happened to be in with Hal and Will on some budget, budget preparation. Um, and I might give you a few minutes to sort of address the other members, Tracy, on specifically the help and the legal issues that you're, that you're living with up there. So, um, any comments, or I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, uh, since I'm very involved...
Yes, sir.
...with, with this particular arena, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
I thought you would. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you very much. Further discussion or comments on the board? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Now, Tracy, you want to, um, just kind of bring the board up with what you're dealing with there?
We have a, um, couple of very key areas that we are going to try and address during our budget time. One of those areas, um, as I've mentioned before, we have record numbers of youth who are in foster care at this time. And we also have the competing value of court-ordered visitation with family members. We have not changed the number of staff members that are supervising those court-ordered visitation since 2012. In 2012, we had around 100 youth in foster care. We are more than double that number now. And it has been very, very difficult in order for us to keep up with the court-ordered visitation for foster youth. And, um, doing that is very important to us for a lot of different reasons. One is, we want to do everything that we can to support parents and children, to allow the children to go back home if possible. The other is, it's court-ordered, and I don't look good in orange. So, uh, I like to do what the court orders us to do, and we have been having a very difficult time doing that with the current staff. So I'm going to be asking for an increase in staff, so that we can keep up with the court-ordered visitation that we are ordered to do. The second issue that I am going to be addressing is, we have had a 70% increase in the number of petitions filed, um, for youth who are abused, neglected, or dependent since last year. During that same time, the majority of the time, instead of two attorneys, I have only had one attorney, and we are working hard to death. I have had a lot of challenges trying to recruit, um, an attorney. I've been very unsuccessful despite our best efforts, and so I'm going to be requesting a paralegal whom I think would be a little bit easier to recruit, so that we are not working our legal team that we currently have to death. So this budget, I'm going to be asking for some support positions, so that we can continue to do that work. And you guys know I'm a closet nerd, so I have numbers to support what we're asking for. That simply our numbers are far outweighing our ability to meet the need with the current staff that we have. Thank you for allowing me to speak on that.
Good, could I ask, Mr. Chairman, for Tracy, since you're here, could you expand a little bit on the amount of court time your people have to spend, and how that affects your whole program?
Um, I, in trying to come up with, um, a way to quantify our needs, I look at the number of children we have coming in, and as there's a 70% increase in number of petitions, which means we have more children abused, neglected, and dependent, all of that begins the court process. And at the front of our court process, our attorney has to go to court, um, weekly for a couple of weeks to defend that case, then monthly in 30 days, and then that case is on, on a regular basis for the next 12 to 24 months. And when I quantify, I try and figure out, is this something that is paying to us now? You know, are the numbers just up for now? Well, what I can tell you with the number of children that we have in custody, and the number of petitions we're filing, in order for that case to work through the system, it takes 12 to 24 months. So this is not something that we're going to be dealing with just now. It's going to be something that we are going to be supporting for a long period of time, until our numbers go down. Significant court time, um, more court days, more preparation, increase in court orders, all of those are a part of the reality of why we're requesting some support.
And all of this continued to go on during the pandemic?
All of this continues to go on during the pandemic. I was so excited to hear about the opioid settlement, and I hope that when we are talking about things that we can do to support the community, we will not forget our most vulnerable population is suffering, uh, because of what's going on in the community with the opioid addiction. We really want to find some way to support parents and our youth, um, that are struggling also.
One other question. Um, again, kind of off the subject a little bit, but, but maybe it's really not. Where are you finding people to work? I know you're understaffed. Would you kind of enunciate a little bit on that?
We are suffering, as everyone else is, with workforce issues. Uh, we're losing some of our staff who have to work very difficult jobs to some of the other positions in the county where you can make the same money and not work as hard. You know, no running through the woods in the middle of the night after children or parents, um, no working on the weekends or holidays. So it has been a difficult thing to continue to recruit and retain a qualified workforce. And we just are continuing to plug at it. We are throwing everything that we can up against the wall, um, thinking outside of the box. We've asked Hal for some, you know, just anything we can think of, and we've been getting, um, substantial support in our ask. So, um, thank you for that question. It is an issue with workforce, but we are doing everything that we can to stay on top of it. Sometimes I feel like, as soon as, you know, if it's a dam, we plug a hole, another one starts somewhere else. But we do appreciate the support that we receive from county leadership.
Tracy, you have a new assistant. Would you want to, you have a new assistant?
I do. Um, our assistant director, Mr. Val Danberville, was here with us. Would he stand, please? Um, most of you have met Mr. Danberville. He has substantial child welfare experience and has been with us since January. I want you to know, he was very excited to come to Randolph County to work. He started work on the first working day in January, and he bought a house and moved here in February. So he is a Randolph County, um, resident, and we appreciate having him here and his expertise to help us.
If you raided another county to get him, I don't want to hear it.
He found us. That's what I'll tell you. He found us.
That's good.
He found us. Thank you.
That's what we like.
Appreciate that.
Glad to have you. I've, I've chatted with him a couple of times, and he was at our, uh, Safety Awards luncheon the other day with the rest of our crowd, and I, I'll just mention, I think every department and county got a safety award that day, and he was there representing Social Services.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, next item on our agenda is establish a hospital psychiatric renovation capital project fund. There's a little bit of a story that goes along with this, folks, and, um, I don't know how, to what detail Will's going to go, but, um, the General Assembly set aside $4 million for psych beds at Randolph Hospital, and, um, it does not require a certificate of need. Those funds will come through the county, and the hospital has the criteria that they have to meet in order to draw down those funds. So Will, you can have it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Didn't go quite long enough for, uh, Will to get his battery here.
There we go.
So as the chairman spoke, you know, the state has provided, uh, grant funding, you're well aware, um, the state budget had a, a lot of different projects that they were funding. And we will be getting the, um, $4 million for the, uh, Randolph Health, uh, passing through Randolph County. So, uh, this will be treated pretty much the same way that we were doing the Ag Center. It has to be a scope of work. We submit that to the state, they put that into the contract, we sign the contract, then we get the money. So this is the first step to be able to do that, just as we did for the Ag Center. We pro, uh, would propose to set up a capital project for these funds, and do this on a reimbursement basis, just like we had planned to do for the rural health stabilization monies that we expect to get, uh, at some point as well, too. So the three action items would be, um, to accept the grant, to authorize the chairman to sign the grant documentation, and to adopt the capital project ordinance.
So I just wanted to emphasize that the county will control dispensing of the funds as, as requested and as documented.
Question, uh, does the county participate in funding on this as well?
No.
It's just a state?
This is a specific, uh, funding by the General Assembly of North Carolina, but the funds, um, the funds are being sent through the county, and I will add, as is the, um, $12 million from the Rural Hospital Stabilization Fund. All of those funds will come through Randolph County. The county...
Yep. There are specific report...
To this board, to this board of county commissioners.
There is specific reporting that goes along with this, just as there was for the Ag Center.
Say, say that again.
I'm sorry. There's specific reporting that we will be doing with this grant, just like we would for the Ag Center.
And, and then, and also to, to, a little bit, I've got to admit, to my surprise, uh, when all this hospital thing was going on, you know, you're ju, you're assuming that this kind of service is being done, and it wasn't. It hasn't been.
No, it hasn't been.
There's, uh, I want people out there to understand that we haven't had this type of service in this county, uh, unless I'm sadly mistaken, and I don't think I am. Uh, this service needs to be here, and, uh, it's great that the state has been willing to step forward and, uh, give this group a hell.
You, you, you will note on your agenda item there, the projected cost of doing this is $8 million. So American Health Systems, who is the owner of Randolph Hospital now, they will have to put up their matching $4 million in order for these beds to, to appear. And that's, that's part of the concern. There's some, some rooms in the hospital that are not, today are not usable, so, um...
I guess, Mr. Chairman, too.
I'm trying to be diplomatic about this process, folks.
Whose funds do we use first?
That's right.
That's, that's going to be a key as well.
Yes. Vice Chair Allen and I collaborated on this process, and we felt like this was a, uh, a more acceptable and, uh, uh, traceable use of the funds. And that's, that's what we intend to do with the 12 million. I will remind, $3 million of that stays with the county, because we advanced that, and that's, that's part of our reason. We, we had some questions about the use of that. Um, there's been several things there, and we just felt like that the commissioners representing the public, we worked hard, we worked hard to get this hospital where it is today, and not to just, uh, turn it loose.
And again, I think it's notable for the public to know that you two guys are on that board, and you're, you've got your eyes on it.
Well, that was part of the problem, too. We, we just had our first board meeting about three weeks ago, since last July the first, so...
So there's a little, little work to be done there to get folks comfortable with what's going on, so...
Yes.
The important thing is, this will give Randolph County some psych beds that heretofore we've not had. And I'm sure our public health department and social services will testify that it's needed. And, and the detention center, absolutely. They're living with it every day. The law does not allow those prisoners to be co-mingled. Lots, lots of issues here. And we, we just want to try to stay on top of it. Do I have a motion?
Um, I'll make the motion to accept the $4 million state grant for the hospital psychiatric renovation, uh, to authorize the chairman to sign the scope of work and related grant documentation, and approve the ordinance to establish a hospital psychiatric renovation capital project fund.
Second. Thank you. Further discussion or questions? Anybody? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And it's approved. Thank you very much. And Will's going to stay here. Next, and I know we have lots of, uh, folks in the audience tonight with our Ag Extension Board, and, uh, want to recognize all of you and your efforts, um, in agricultural community in our county. You still, still play a big role in, uh, in the future of this county, our everyday of, uh, well-being in this county. And, uh, I know some of you, I've recognized some faces I've known as long as I've been on this board, and, uh, I'm glad to, to have your experience and expertise as we go forward. So, Will?
Okay, thanks, sir. We discussed at the retreat that, uh, we had a good year in 2021. You know, we budgeted conservatively, because we didn't know what the effects of the pandemic were going to be. And, uh, with all the stimulus money that came down, our sales tax stayed strong, we didn't operate a lot of programs that we normally would have operated. So we had a substantial amount of money that was in excess of our 24% of fund balance requirement. So that money was usually set aside for capital improvements. That allows us to do, uh, the things that we need to do for our facilities, uh, without borrowing the money. So it's, uh, very useful. We've done that for a number of years. Last month, you went ahead and set aside some of that money, uh, for the Deep River Trail, for the Lux Plant down in Sioux Grove, uh, and to finish up the, um, courthouse renovation project. So tonight, I've got several more projects, if you're, uh, interested in, in going ahead and moving that money out of the general fund and into the various capital project funds to start these projects. and into the various capital project funds to start these projects. We've already done the, uh, design work on most of these. It's ongoing. We don't have the bids in yet, but this is just a way to kind of clear out that money, uh, before the end of the year and know that it's there and we can move these projects forward, uh, at some level. So the first one on the list was the Farm, Food and Family Education Center. Out of that pot of money we had left over from June of '21, uh, we're suggesting maybe $5 million to be transferred over. It's anticipated to be around a $30 million project that was projected at 25. A, a lot of the work that's being done is to decide how much grading to do. It's a challenging site because it drops off. There's a lot of rock there. So there's, as we work through this, we'll be making some decisions and try to keep that under $30 million. We already have the state, uh, grant, uh, State Capital Infrastructure Fund grant of 16.4 that this board's already set aside for that. We're still waiting to hear from USDA on whether the loan amounts that we were getting through REMC are, are still going to be available. It's the same project. We're just downsizing it and I think we have to get reapproval. But the $5 million that, uh, we're suggesting will just get us closer to what we, we need and would provide, um, you know, some continuity for the project moving forward. You want to take these projects individually?
I, I think, I think for this one, we probably should and, uh, may, maybe the fourth one. I, I don't know. That'd be up to the board, but, um... And I would just note, this is for a capital project fund. We're, we're allocating the money. Stays with the county. Those who are, uh, I think comes through Kenny Sharon's backyard cooperative extension and the, the committee make requests for a drawdown. I know there's going to be some, uh, soft cost, uh, development. Uh, David, you chime in here. But this, this establishes a fund so that there's some funding set aside for, uh, for the project. It, it again stays, stays with the county.
And I guess Will, too. I don't, I don't think you mentioned the 24% fund balance policy that we have. This is kind of part of that.
Right. At June of '21, uh, because we had such a good year, uh, we are in excess of our, our, sort of our maximum in our fund balance. And so anything above that 24%, we've typically set aside for capital projects, which is this pot of money that we're talking about. What's the best use of those funds? We talked about it at the retreat and this is just following up with, uh, some of those ideas.
The, uh, and, and 30 million, you know, that's, that's, hopefully we can get less than that depending on, uh, there's a lot of questions about how, how much to grade, what to clear, those kinds of things that can make a difference. So they're working to get that down closer to 25. Next month, hopefully, uh, we will have the site, uh, plan, uh, to show the commissioners and to look to move forward. So they've been working on that. I know several of the folks out there, uh, with the, uh, committee have been working hard to determine the, the use of the site, the placement of the buildings, uh, also the, the, how to raise some additional funding, uh, the programs and also the operations of the, uh, the facility once it's built. So there's a lot of work still going on. I appreciate everybody that's here tonight. If you would, I, I would like to ask if you are here, uh, regarding the Ag Center, if you would maybe stand up. Uh, that'd be, appreciate that. I just want to see, uh, Kent Davis back there actually stand, so...
I could see him.
He is, yeah, you can't see. He's the, uh, VAD Board Chairman, so we give him a lot of, a lot of grief. So thank you all. Appreciate it. But hopefully next month, uh, they'll be prepared to discuss this a little bit further and, uh, where we can continue to move forward with the project.
Representative Allen McNeil is here tonight and I, I recognized him earlier, but you can see that state grant funds, um, I think I'm right, Mike. 15 came, you've got that directed and Senator Craven got one. Is that, is that the math? I think that's correct.
You got one point.
Uh, the 1.4 actually, um, was a part of Senator Craven, but 15 million of that came from state through the efforts of Allen McNeil and, uh, that'll be a great legacy for him as, as this project goes forward. And, uh, thinking in the, the USDA loans, as Will mentioned, that's through Randolph Electric. It's making that available to us also. So, um...
Just, just as a question, is, how viable is that or from the USDA?
I think it's ours for the asking, pretty much. That's what I'm asking.
The original, uh, uh, application was $2 million for the Ag, um, Radio Arena kind of set up and the other 2 million was for the Event Center. But it's all for soft costs. Now this has been downsized somewhat, but it's still accomplishing the same thing. But we have to get, you know, pre-approval, I think, to make sure that we can still use it. It's still for soft costs, which is not, um, the grading and the building costs. So this is again, kind of a reporting thing, you know, the 16.4, our money can, well, 16.4 is be for construction because that's what we told the state we were going to do with it. Architectural fees and maybe fencing, the equipment, that kind of thing would be the soft costs that would, um, we would use this loan money for.
Feel pretty good about the viability of it.
Yes.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, and, and-
Fred Smith has been, he's been on board with us all, all through the years.
Yeah, and he's working through the process. I mean, it's, um, since it's already been submitted, it necessarily, he's trying to get clarification on resubmission or just updates and that kind of thing.
Gotcha.
Uh, and, and as we'll see hopefully next month, um, there are different areas that could be carved out, uh, you know, like, uh, the, uh, commercial kitchen or some, or greenhouses or, uh, incubator farm. Those kinds of things can be done separately. And so we're also looking potentially at maybe some, uh, well, Commissioner Dow, if you'd like to have something out there with your name on it, you know, that we'd be happy to talk to you.
That could work, right, yeah. Appreciate it.
But there'll be those, those, hopefully, opportunities for folks that might want to, um, contribute to. So we'll be working on that. Mr. Chairman, I, I would, um, make a motion that we, um, approve the budget amendment for $5 million in funding the Food, Farm and Family Education Center.
I'll second that.
Have a second, Commissioner Haywood? Any other discussion or questions? Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And it's approved. Okay, Will. Uh, next one is, um, the, uh, Dave Reporting Center.
Juvenile Day Reporting Center, once we move, um, Child Support Services up to Northgate, that frees up this space. Paxton's going to talk shortly about the design piece of it and moving that project forward. The 300,000, it was, um, done before we got the bids in. It might be a little bit on the high side, but certainly if we have money left over at the end, we can move that to a different project.
Thanks, Colin.
This is primarily, I think, for a training space, but they'll talk about that shortly. But this would just set the money aside so we know that we can get that project accomplished.
All right. I know this will be a help to, to Tracy and give them some more space. Have a motion?
I'll make the motion. We approve the, uh, his, his request.
Second. Those in fa- those, any discussion, questions? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved. Northgate renovation of the Rent-A-Center space.
Okay. Once Rent-A-Center moves out, uh, that space will be available for renovation. This is the last major piece up there that we would want to renovate. Uh, anticipated cost is about 1.5 million. You have, uh, approved moving forward with some of the design and bidding that out. So, uh, that will be coming later on. But this, again, would be setting the money aside so that we know that we had it to do this project. This would be the budget amendment for the existing-
What is the timeline on that for, uh, the tenant to move out?
I'll, uh, defer to Paxton on the timeline for Northgate.
We're wrapping it up right now. It shouldn't be completed next month or so. Then we can move right into the next phase.
Good.
Well, you asked about Rent-A-Center, when they're going to be moving or?
Yeah, that's what I, yeah.
What, you know when the lease is up or when Rent-A-Center would be moved?
It's down last week.
Okay.
Discussion? Have a motion?
So moved. We approved 50, 1.5 for Northgate renovations.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor, let it know, be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no? Now, item four is renovations to the historic courthouse.
Where we stand.
Yes, that's where we are.
We've talked about this. We're, the intent would be to renovate the downstairs for the county museum, build an elevator shaft to make this more, um, um, compliant with the EAA. It's a pretty large project, but, um, um, that is still in the design phase, too, and should get a report on that within a few months. But again, you know, uh, this would be the budget amendment.
But again, we're, we're setting up a fund policy. We haven't really approved an invoice to be paid or we don't have it. We don't have an invoice to be paid.
Yep. You've already budgeted the, um, architectural fees, move that forward. This is the bulk of the money we'll need for the major construction.
Roughly a million dollars of this, if you remember, is for the elevator so that this building would be, um, handicap accessible. Uh, and we've had discussion about, about the museum. Closest thing we have to it now is at the county library across the street here. So that's, I, I, I think there's still some discussion, still probably some decisions to be made there, but we, um, we're setting up a fund. If that's the direction we want to go.
I think, too, there's some issues, uh, with the, you know, that need to be taken care of regardless of the, the, uh, basement areas and, uh, so there's some, some major issues in the basement.
The building, the building is in need of some repairs also.
At, at a minimum, I think we need to at least consider that.
Further discussion? Have a motion?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendment for $3 million for the historic courthouse capital project.
Have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Questions? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved. Um...
If I could just make a quick statement right in here, I'll make it quick. But I just want the people who may be watching at home, once again, to understand that these items that were just approved, um, are not over and beyond the budget. They come from the excess of the fund balance. So Commissioner Allen brought that out. I want to make that clear. Um, I also want to go to a statement that was made in a public setting, um, in the past week or two, that, um, taxes have not been lowered in Randolph County. And I wanted to correct that statement just because my husband insisted on that tax cut. So it wasn't much. It was just a quarter of a cent. But often what does happen is property taxes will go up and so the, the, the rate will be brought in line with that. So there, that we are at a revenue neutral position. But that is not what happened in 2016. So we were at a tax rate of 65 and five tenths, yeah, 65 cents, however you say that, 65 and five ten, .5 cents. In 2015, Stan, at that point in time, said, "I think I'd just like to see if we could decrease taxes if at all possible, if we could decrease the tax rate." So that was done in 2016. We went to a 65.25 cent rate. And then in 2019, we went to, uh, to a 63.27 cent rate and that's where we are now. And that at, in 2019, was that revenue neutral position. But in 2016, people got a quarter back, a quarter cent back. So, not a lot, but...
Well, I, I would, I had planned to make a couple of comments about what we just did, these four items and, and setting up these funds. And Will mentioned it. I just want to reemphasize that. This, we have a floor. We have a minimum fund balance goal that we keep and we don't come under that. What we just did came from monies from the 2021 budget. Not the current budget, but 2021, which says we don't spend money that we don't have. And secondly, we don't incur debt till we've paid off the debt we already have. And if you look at what we've done here with, uh, the expansion at Ashboro High School, our, our detention center, uh, new middle school in Trinity. We, we funded the mega site and through all of that, we have not raised taxes. So it's, it's a, it speaks to this board and our philosophy of how we handle the public dollars. But we, we didn't spend what we have and we still have our fund balance goal in place. And we're still have this current year to deal with. So, um, I just wanted to, to make those points about how we've looked at this and what, what these projects really have the potential to do and I, uh, for, for the county and its citizens and how, how this board, I, um, I'm proud of this board and, um, they're fiscally responsible in every way and, uh, we have not extended, overextended the county in any way with the, with the decisions that, that's been made here tonight. So... And I, I appreciate this board and working to see that we, we continue to do that. All right, um...
Mr. Chairman, could I make a, go ahead, make a comment about that? We've, we've been very blessed, I want to use that word, in, in several different ways. The fact that we do have a conservative board that looks at these things. And yet we're talking about millions of dollars here and all this kind of thing. But when we're talking about these kind of things like the Northgate renovation, we were very blessed that that kind of situation came up. And we've talked amongst ourselves more than one time about how lucky we are, no, blessed we are, that we were able to take that facility. Because I, I remember when that came out and people were like, "What are you guys doing?" But look at all that's happened. It's given social services offices that they are still badly needing. And we've done all that and paid it as we've gone with it and dealt with it and part of the, part of the Northgate renovation and all that's going on there, we've been very blessed. We've been able to do some of these things we've been able to do. And still look at what we need to do about funding the capability of having what we need to have, the services count.
Yeah, and I, I'll mention, too, the Northgate project has allowed the city of Ashboro to put up a satellite police station up there in the old bank building. So that was sort of a little side deal or side benefit that's come out of all this, too.
And it's allowed us to renovate the courthouse, too, by the way.
Yes. Correct. That's right, it has. The, the courthouse across the way over here.
Expand, uh, expand veteran services by, uh, alleviating the crowded Board of Elections.
Absolutely. Just several different things that might be aware to us. I'm, I'm speaking to the folks that are watching. There's a lot of things that, that we've been able to do that, that we've been blessed that we've been able to do it, to be honest.
Okay, um, item F, uh, bids for the renovation of the Juvenile Day Reporting Center.
Good evening. Uh, when we present the bids, first I want to give a quick update on the, the project. Uh, this is the, uh, current JDRC and Child Support Building and, and like y'all were just saying, this is another one of those projects that wouldn't be possible without Northgate. You know, right now they're, we're getting ready to wrap up a renovation up there. And in about a month, in Child Support, we'll be able to move out. And at that time, we'll be able to start the renovation here. Uh, right now, you see the, the left-hand side, the smaller portion, that is the current JDRC space. Uh, the larger one to the right, that's the current Child Support space. So once they move out, we'll begin the project. Here's a proposed, uh, floor plan. You can see we're only renovating about one-fourth of the building. Uh, that's- Uh, that's, they've been able to keep the cost down by not having to renovate the whole area. This, the main project is to create four new classrooms for J D R C. Once they complete this, then J D R C will move in and the school resource officers will be able to move in the space where they're currently at, and no work was required there either. So, uh, last month, I put it out for a bid and sent it to three contractors. We have Granco Construction, S and S Building and Development, and S E Trolden and Sons. Uh, we did have one no bid, but we still had good results. I was expecting the cost to come in well over two hundred thousand, and the low bid was a hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred dollars. So I was very pleased with the results. Uh, the low bid was Granco Construction. This is the contractor that did the first phase at North Gate when we did the elections and A D R C. They've also done considerable work at R C C and the zoo, so I've been pleased with their work. I asked them to identify, you know, how quickly they could do it. They've said that they can get started as soon as the building's emptying, and they think it'll take two to three months. So we should have it complete by the end of summer. Here's a budget for the project. In addition to the construction costs, you know, we've also got some design fee, the furniture, existing H V A C units. Robert Cross with Maintenance has already gotten bids for the, there's like three units there that are pretty old and probably on their last legs anyway. So while the building's vacant and under construction, uh, he's going to go ahead and change out those three units. Uh, we've also got some technology funds, we're going to put a new sign out front and contingency. So all that combined brings a grand total of just over two hundred fifty thousand. So with that, I would like to request that you award a contract to Granco Construction for the renovation to create four new classrooms at a cost of one hundred sixty-one thousand, four hundred dollars, and that you authorize the county manager to sign the contract. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Well, I'm happy to see this. I certainly don't want to, if we got some discussion or whatever about this, but just knowing the need over there for the classrooms, I'm tickled to death. And I actually didn't see the bid come in so low and be able to start so fast. So I'd love to make that motion to accept a bid from Granco, if you're comfortable with them. Any amount of, what is it, one sixty-one, four hundred, uh, for the renovation of J D R C.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Pick one. Now, in, in discussion on questions? It's good news. All right, those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved.
All right, thank you.
Item G is. Amy?
Okay. We've done this a couple of times before, but I will refresh your memory quickly. Ubari Charter Academy is intending to construct an educational facility, approximately eighty thousand square feet in size, eighty classrooms, a trades, a trades education center, approximately twenty-four thousand, five hundred and eighteen square feet in size, and a central administrative office, approximately five thousand, thirty-four square feet in size. And they are also refinancing a recent loan. And in order to do this, they are pursuing the use of tax-exempt financing through the issuance of Public Finance Authority Education Revenue Bonds in a, in a maximum stated amount of forty-eight million, five hundred thousand. One of the IRS requirements for these bonds is that a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing be held for interested people to express their views either orally or in writing and their views on the issuance of the bonds and the nature of the improvements and the projects for which the bonds would be allocated. Per the statute, the hearing is held by a hearing officer authorized by the local government. That hearing was held earlier this afternoon at the Randolph County Office Building with me serving as the hearing officer as I have in the past. No comments were submitted to me beforehand in writing, and no one attended the hearing. So now I'm asking on behalf of Ubari Charter, and I think we have someone here, if you have any questions about the project or, or anything like that. But I am asking that you consider the resolution in your packet. It indicates your approval as the local government where the improvements are located of the issuance of the bonds and the financing of the project by Ubari Charter in this manner. But I want to note that in granting that approval, you are not making any representation to the purchasers of the bonds as to the credit, creditworthiness of Ubari, nor to the economic feasibility of the project. And you're not endorsing the project or obligating the county in any manner whatsoever. It is simply something required by the IRS for Ubari to proceed with tax-exempt financing. So if you have any questions, maybe one of us can answer them.
Do you have any, you want to, I know we had a groundbreaking, uh, week ago Friday. Maxton made a nice speech for the county commissioners down there that day.
Yeah, we're just excited. Yeah, you'll have to speak into the mic because the people at home can't hear you. And one of the reasons we came back is we're actually going to pay off a USDA loan, so that's why the increase in the payment. So that way, we're free and clear on that.
Right. Do I have any questions?
I want to make a motion, uh, that we, that we approve the resolution of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners to approve the issuance, or approving the issuance of bonds by the Public Finance Authority and a plan of finance for Ubari Charter Academy.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second. Further discussion or questions? Just note, um, not endorsing nor obligating the county in any manner whatsoever, but we wish you the best.
Thank you.
Nice campus there.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved. Okay, Will?
I am going to cover this, but just remember, I didn't write this story. You know, every once in a while, the state takes some big swings at how they administer mental health services. In this case, it's Medicaid payments. They were on what's called a, um, I didn't bring my forms up there, more of a pay-for-contract. And now they're going to, their model is what they call managed care. So what they've done is they've gone out and, you know, we've signed contracts, the Health Department's signed contracts, ambulance has signed contracts, outside vendors that might want to do non-emergency travel, signed contracts. And it's all, they're all going to be paid the Medicaid rate. In the past, what, what we got was maybe a little bit on the front side. And then with the help of the Association of County Commissioners, they had a Medicaid settlement process. And then we got a big distribution on the backside to kind of help cover the costs and bring us back up to what Medicaid typically would pay. With managed care, it's kind of the opposite. We will get all the money on the front side, and then we have to reimburse the state for the non-federal share. So in, I assume this is more efficient or more in compliance with what the federal regulations are. This is the example that was in the letter, you know, County Department of Health and Human Services sent on February the first, when they sent the invoice. So we know, knew that they had been doing this, but this is the first time we got the invoice. But you see the fee for service up at the top. We got a little bit to start with, and then the settlement, and we got, in this example, seventy-six dollars and forty-seven cents. With managed care, we will get the full hundred dollars, but the non-federal share, we have to pay that back. So we get drafted on a quarterly basis, but we end up with the same seventy-six, forty-seven that we would. In theory, um, this is revenue neutral, but, um, there you go.
I mean, what's the ba, how, how did they come up with, did they just pick a number, twenty thousand dollars and?
Well, the first invoice was forty-six hundred dollars. So I'm estimating just twenty thousand dollars for the year. That first invoice is from July to September, so we're going to get four of these. So we just picked a number. We're going to show higher revenues coming in, and then this is basically allowing us to have that expense where it goes out. You know, we're not netting this together like it kind of was in the past. All you got was the net revenues. We're going to show this as being the gross revenues and an expense in, in the emergency services.
Tracy, I'm, uh, what's the Medicaid budget for Randolph County?
It's around two hundred million.
Medicaid budget for Randolph County is two hundred million dollars. Our total budget for everything we run is about a hundred and thirty, thirty-one or two, something like that. But a Medicaid, just Medicaid in Randolph County is over two hundred million dollars. And we're one county out of a hundred and one state out of fifty. Okay. Have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion to approve the budget amendment of the Emergency Services Management Care in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved. All right. Before we get to, um, I don't know if Hal's got something, David and I might, but, um, I wanted to comment, and I know we've lost our crowd here, but I, I'm sure there's some folks watching or will be watching. You have received, some of you have received letters in the mail regarding changes in the structure of our fire districts in Randolph County. I happen to be in the Gilran Fire District, and we got our letter at home while, while, over the weekend. And we're getting some calls, I've had some calls, the county's had some calls, probably some of you have had calls or comments. It's an attempt to put our eighteen fire districts under the same structure. We don't have that now, and it's creating some issues. What is generating the, the questions has to do with that it could not exceed a dollar and fifty cent per one hundred dollar praise value. Right now, we don't have a single fire department in Randolph County that has a tax rate above fifteen cents. And this letter plain, plainly says it's not a tax increase. The Board of County Commissioners will ultimately set the rate each year as it has always done. So the same, we're still following the same process that we do every single year when we set fire districts. And it is, the dollar fifty is a state, uh, limit. This, this is allowed under state law. But this, these taxes and the county, the fire taxes are, will continue to be set by the Board of County Commissioners. Each one of these departments has its own board of directors, they have their own fire chiefs, and they submit a budget to us every year. We do have one department in the county, one that we know for sure, wants to raise their rate above fifteen cents, by two, I think by two cents. Fire departments, there, there are no volunteer fire departments anymore. Between OSHA and insurance regulations, they've got to have, um, full-time firemen. Even the volunteers that we do have, they have to have the same training and they have to have the same uniforms and equipment as a, as a full-time fireman. So the boards are, are dealing with that. But this is, this in no way takes away from the process that the county has always followed in setting fire tax rates in every jurisdiction. And they range from a little less than ten cent to the fifteen. So that's not going to change. And I'm just making that, making that statement. We're doing four, four fire districts now at public hearings, and we will continue that process till all eighteen have, have been held. Uh, the changes would not go into effect until July one of twenty twenty-three. So that's a process that we're following, and I just wanted to make those statements, so.
Chairman, may I add that a lot of questions that we've been getting have been in regards to the property owner. People that rent feel like they are being, going to be charged taxes for the, that residence. Property includes personal property as well, registered vehicles, for instance, and that's the majority of why these people are receiving letters. So it's not, if you rent, it's not saying that you owe taxes on that property, it's your own personal property.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. How do you have?
May's going to be a very busy agenda. We'll have a zoning appeal in, in May. We, we normally have those the second Monday of each month. Our May agenda is already building up with a, a public hearing relative to the fire departments and, and some opioid issues that we'll be talking about in addition to some other things. So May's, May will be a busy agenda time for the commissioners.
And then we start the budget process.
Yes.
And Commissioner Allen might, might have a comment. We, we had a state board meeting this past weekend, and I will say, Commissioner Allen represents our district eleven. That's Randolph, Davidson, Guilford, Alamance, Rockingham, and Caswell Counties. We, we have a rotation process. And so it was Randolph County's turn to have a two-year term on the State Association of County Commissioners. And Mr. Allen was appointed to that, uh, to represent District Eleven. I serve on the board at the direction of the current president as a past president of the association. So Randolph County now has two county commissioners represented on, on the state board. I'll make one comment. I was asked to chair a committee to change the voting process for legislative goals, the goals that county commissioners set every year. In the past, it's been a simple majority, fifty percent plus one. We've had some pretty heated discussions to get to fifty-fifty. And then you got half of the county commissioners in North Carolina going home and telling their representatives, we don't like that, don't, don't do it. So we agreed, the committee agreed and reported that we raised the threshold to a two-thirds vote so that we get a broader representation and a stronger voice in lobbying for county commissioner issues. That will apply to our steering committee votes, the legislative goals committee, uh, votes, and the state Board of County Commissioners votes. So, um, the side, I think a side benefit to that, it probably, and it should, uh, reduce the number of things that we ask for. And I'm sure if Allen McNeil was sitting out there right now, he would say amen. We just do too much, and it weakens those chief causes that we have as counties. So the board voted to put that into effect, and it will start with the legislative goals, our next, um, legislative goals process. So I'll just report that, and David, if you want.
I would like to remind the commissioners, probably getting some information on that, that, uh, we will be having a district, uh, meeting, uh, May the twenty-sixth at the Chatham County Ag Center. The, they do these, um, every two, two years, I believe. Haven't had it because of the COVID, but, um, and usually they're, they're focused on something. And this, this is going to be more focused on our legislators, uh, to give the county commissioners an opportunity to, um, introduce themselves to their representatives. We have a good relationship with the folks here in Randolph County, but there are other counties that may not have quite as good a relationship. So we just want to get some common ground and, um, to have some discussions with those folks, what's important with the, uh, county commissioners. And that kind of ties in to the legislative goals process, uh, that will be starting in, in a couple, well, I guess in a couple of months. So, um, Mr. Chairman, that's, um, all the other things I was going to say. What we did tonight, uh, there was some discussion, I think Saturday morning, about the ARPA, uh, and the funding there. And there has been some discussion in Washington about the clawbacks of, uh, potentially some of that ARPA funding because it's not being used. There was, uh, some, uh, senators that wants that, uh, to be used quickly. That was for state funding, it wasn't for anything that, that, um, was direct grants to the counties or to municipalities. But what it was saying, they want that money to be recycled, but, uh, we've taken the process of being very diligent and very deliberate in how we're doing that. But we are making progress, and I think that's what the, the whole issue was. But there are some, uh, potential folks out there that may be kind of, you know, hoarding that. And the whole idea was, it's COVID response, you know, recycling through the economy. So that was one of the things I took away, that I think we're in pretty good shape in what we've done tonight with the, with some of the, the state funds for the Ag Center, also for the hospital tonight. We're utilizing that money and setting it aside, so, uh, I think we're, we're in good stead.
I would say, and Kenny, you might know, they have, they extended the deadline for filing the great grants by another month. You probably were there, first, first Monday of May instead of first Monday of April, I think. So I guess we'll wait a little bit longer to find out who gets, who gets a grant. So that did come out also this weekend.
Mr. Chairman, follow up on what Commissioner Allen said. I think the general public, or some of the general public, let's put it that way, thinks that when we get this money from the feds, you can just spend it on whatever you want to. There are all kinds of strings attached. And I think we've had to express that to, to different ones, that there are strings attached to what you have to do, that you can't just, just spend it. It's got to be spent for specific purposes in specific ways that fall under the, the definitions of what the feds say qualifies.
All right, any other business tonight? Thank all of you at home, the, who are listening or watching our proceedings tonight. For those of you that stayed with us to the end, we thank you for that. It's been a, it's been a busy evening. Folks, I, I hope that, I hope we can move from some of the dialogue from the start of our meetings, and I hope that this Board of County Commissioners is, is judged by, by what we do and how the the commitment to, to all people in this county and to, in particular, the folks that work hard every day to deliver county services to the citizens of this county. And it, some of it gets to be personal, and I hope and pray that we, that we move through this. Thank all of you for being here tonight and being a part of the process. We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned and pleased.